Madam Clerk, we're all members. Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Ovita Martina. Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Amparano.
Here.
And Mayor Bernworth, here. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Colton, are you going to lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin.
Mr. Marito, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you. Mrs. Turner, do we have any reportable actions from closed session?
Yes, we do. The council discussed conference with real property negotiators regarding the old post office. Direction was given. We also discussed public employee performance evaluation as listed on the agenda and direction was given. That concludes my report.
Moving on to public comment. Matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the city council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on three of three minutes on each person's presentation. Do we have anybody here for a public comment tonight? Madam Clerk, did we receive any via email?
No, Madam.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item A. Reorganization of the city council for 2024. A1, recognition of outgoing Mayor Bernworth.
All right, well, I guess I'll take this one. So actually, Dennis, that would be you, right? That'll be me? All right, sure. So Mayor Bernworth, for your time with us in 2023, you have led us through a lot of great things. You know, the city of Imperial is a great city. We're small, but we are a family. You can see it by this room today. We have organizations with our youth. We have families, we have friends, we have all of our department heads, we have friends from far and near. But a lot of the great accomplishments that Mayor Bernworth did this year was through through her time. We're getting our streets rebuilt. She helped us receive a $3 million grant to rebuild our streets. She helped us with our incubator kitchen project. I mean, there's numerous, numerous projects that she did, and that's all through her hard work. The collaboration with our state representatives, that's another thing that helped us get where we're at today. So Mayor Bernworth, as your Mayor Protem, I appreciate everything you did for the city. Your hard work, your dedication. I know sometimes it takes time from our families in our life to do this, so I appreciate it. I think we all appreciate it. So we have a plaque for you. It's a little plaque. So what I'll read it. It says, "With great appreciation to Catherine Bernworth, City of Imperial Mayor 2023, and recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the community of Imperial." With with extended, sorry. Can't read.
Get the glasses.
Yeah. We extended our sincere gratitude for your unwavering commitment and dedication to the betterment of our city. May your legacy continue to inspire future generations. Congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you. Our comments are last, or you lead.
So with that, we have a list of presentations that would like to recognize our outgoing Mayor Bernworth. We have Southwest Valley 4H for the year. Into our audience, we know that it takes a lot for our young generation to come up to a microphone and speak in public, especially in people in in settings like this, so we hats off to you guys.
Logan does it better than all five of us.
We ain't gonna lie, he does.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Amparano. On behalf of Southwest Valley 4H, we would like to thank Mayor Bernworth for her year of service. Madam Mayor Bernworth, your dedication to our community and the youth is visible through your efforts in coordinating civic engagement and community service opportunities for us. You were always sharing ideas and encouraging participation in the city's tree planting events. Just this week, you organized a day for our members to help pack food at the IV Food Bank. Thank you again, Madam Mayor Bernworth. We are grateful to have had your support and guidance.
So thank you to Southwest Valley 4H.
We will now turn to the Girl Scouts for their presentation.
Thank you. Tell you, Mr. Logan, I think you're gonna you're gonna do just fine.
Good evening. My name is Natalia Morio. On behalf of Girl Scouts San Diego and some of our Imperial troops, we would like to welcome and show our appreciation to the incoming mayor, Ms. Ramparano. We appreciate your years of service on the council and the support and guidance that you have provided. You have been instrumental in sharing volunteer leads, networking with other organizations, and suggesting for faculty locations to use. We wish you a great upcoming year, and we would like to give you some snacks to keep your energy up, or at least until cookie seasons in January.
All the way to the back. I'm really short.
Everybody ready? I'm gonna count. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, guys. Well, thank you, Girl Scouts, for that. We really appreciate it. I know Mayor Bernworth and myself and the council will definitely enjoy this. Next, we have the Office of Congressman Dr. Rohe Reese. There we go.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and get all my Madam Mayors out so you can hear it a few more times. It is very difficult, very challenging to serve as the mayor, right? From what I've heard and from others' experiences, your phone rings from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and you're constantly having to give your personal time, your weekends. You are the first person that developers want to meet with. You're the first person that the police chief and the city manager calls when there's red alarms, right? But even among all that, I think what the residents of the city of Imperial need to recognize is that you had a lot of accomplishments this year. You were able to open the Sprout Community Garden this year. You did a groundbreaking for the new intercare Pace Clinic and Pharmacy just a few weeks ago, and you, as mentioned by the Mayor Protem, you were able to secure $3 million from the state for the Imperial Corridor Safety Improvement Project. And even amongst that, you were able to prepare and rally your emergency operations team to weather the storm and protect your residents during Tropical Storm Hillary. So for the dedication that you have given to the residents of Imperial, we just wanted to thank you for your year of service and to wish you all the best of luck in the rest of your term and to welcome the incoming leadership. So Mayor Bernworth, this is for you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliva. Next, we have the Office of Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia.
Good evening, members of the city council, Madam Mayor, those who are present today. My name is Guillermo Hernandez. I'm a representative with the Office of Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia. As we gather here, it's my distinct honor to recognize a leader whose dedication and service has profoundly impacted the city of Imperial. Mayor Bernworth's vision and execution in bridging the gap, as previously mentioned, between local and state government have been nothing short of extraordinary. Her commitment to accessibility and collaboration has been a hallmark of her leadership. She's been consistently available, often just a text away, ready to tackle challenges and seize opportunities for our community. One of the most notable achievements under Mayor Bernworth's leadership has been the securing of $3 million in state funding for Imperial Safety Corridor. This accomplishment is not only a testament to her tireless advocacy, but also exemplifies her ability to work effectively with state representatives for the betterment of the city. Mayor Bernworth's approach to governance has set an example for how local and state entities can synergize to achieve common goals. As we celebrate Mayor Bernworth's accomplishments, we also look forward to working with the incoming leadership. The president set by Mayor Bernworth for collaborative projects and partnership is a valuable legacy. As Mayor Bernworth's chapter in this role comes to a close, her legacy of hard work and impactful leadership will undoubtedly continue to influence and inspire. It's with great admiration and respect that we acknowledge Mayor Katie Bernworth's remarkable service, and now it is my honor to present the certificate of recognition of Mayor Bernworth as a symbol of our gratitude and recognition of her invaluable contributions to the community. Thank you.
Good your session today.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Really appreciate it. Moving on, we have the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce. All right.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, we would like to recognize Madam Mayor Bernworth for her year as mayor of the city of Imperial. The Chamber of Commerce would also like to acknowledge and congratulate her for all of the hard work that she has done to create growth and opportunity in the city of Imperial, as well as her dedication to the city's economic future. We wish you continued success and look forward to the opportunity to work with you again in the future, and we look forward to working with incoming leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for joining us. Next, we have the Office of State Senator Steve Padilla.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Mayor, Mr. Protem, and council members. My name is Lorena Minormontes. I am here representing the Office of Senator Steve Padilla. Congratulations, Madam Mayor. You have definitely left a mark this year as mayor of the city of Imperial. Sixth generation Imperial citizen and also raising your children here in Imperial. The city has continued to grow, not only with a new school recently. Your staff has continued to grow. Congratulations to your new staff member and to all the new things that you continue to do. My colleagues colleagues have mentioned already the $3 million that was secured with the state's assistance with Senator Padilla and the Office of Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia. We hopefully will continue to work with the leadership. Congratulations once again. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I know in the in the audience, we do have some of our neighbors and local electeds. If you guys'd like to step up and say a few words, if you'd like. I know we can start with our neighbors and within our city about IID.
Hi, Corinne Eugenio, IID Director, Division Five. Nice to see you all. It feels like just yesterday that I was congratulating you, Mayor Bernworth, or sorry, should I say, Mayor Colton and Parker's mom. It's been so incredible to watch you flourish this year as mayor. I'm especially proud of the $3 million you just got for the city of Imperial and the relationships and the diplomacy that you really flourished this year. So thank you, Madam Mayor. I know how difficult it is to be the mother of young ones and to fill this role. So thank you so much. I'm so proud of you and congratulations. And congratulations, Mayor Amparano. I was, you were my first mayor when I came in in 2018, 2019, you were mayor. We had a lot of fun times. I got to see you do a lot of great work for the city, and I'm excited to see what you do this year. Congratulations to you both.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I wasn't saying if you had wanted to step up and say anything.
Thank you. Have everyone solidified it with you four. I met Mr. Amparano when I was elected at the ICTC, and he immediately started questioning me. So this is the guy that I want to talk to. And I met our outgoing mayor, Catherine, when I was elected. It's been a great honor to know you, and I look forward to working with all of you here in the council and you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know we have representatives to the our neighbors to the south, Cityville Central. I don't know if you guys.
Good evening. Martha Singh, former mayor of the Cityville Central. We just reorganized last week, and I'm here with council member Tomas Oliva. You know, I just want to take this opportunity just to thank you, Madam Mayor. As we both served in the same year as mayors, it was wonderful to have the opportunity of the sisterhood that we shared, that I had the opportunity to have many conversations with you, and we had the opportunity to just really encourage and support each other. Amazing leadership that has taken place. When one city wins, we all win as a community. So congratulations to you and looking forward to working with the new leadership. And I'll hand it over to council member Oliva.
I just want to say congratulations on a great year. I know I was able to say some words earlier on behalf of Congressman Reese, but on behalf of myself, it's always been a pleasure working with you, and I think for yourself and for all your colleagues, it's a lot easier to work being sister cities with you all. And as outgoing mayor Mark Tagarina Singh said, that when we both win, the region wins, and we're all better for it. And so congratulations on a great year.
About our neighbors to the north. You knew that was coming, right? No sharp suit today?
Casual casual Wednesday, casual Wednesday. No, congratulations, Mayor Bernworth. I've known you for quite some time, even worked together. You know, what you represent, not just as a millennial, for the working class, a working mother. It's really great. I think you you represent so much, and you, I think, a movement of new leaders that are coming up. leaders that are coming up. And so, it's really exciting to see you this past year and see your growth from your first campaign several, a few years ago and to see you here now, it's really, really cool and really great and really amazing to be a part of it and now be here. And so, to Mr. Amparano, also you'll be the incoming mayor. I just got off work and I just came over and so, I don't know what's going on, no. I bet you brief, I've worked with you as well and, you know, seeing your work ethic, not here but off the clock and what you bring to this board is also amazing. And so, thank you, I've learned a lot just from speaking with you at these events. I'm not wearing a suit and you are, so it's all weird right now, it's very weird right now. So, no, Imperial, you got a great team and, you know, you have a great staff and I know Janelle just joined and it's a really great addition to your team. Give it up for Janelle too as well. It's a great addition and Dennis and everyone, Victor and everyone here. So, congrats and party on, thank you.
Thanks, Billy.
So, I apologize if I missed any other electeds, but if there is, please speak up. If not, I'd like to open it up at this time for the general public, if they'd like to step up to the microphone and say a few words.
Hi, I'm Felipe Aragon and I've known Katie a lot of years and I just need to, I'm very impressed at what she's done with the city, very impressed as how she's been able to be a mother of two and still do her job and still work for the city. So, I'm very proud of you, I'm proud that you're my friend and best of luck to you.
Mic's still open, if anybody would like? Okay? All right. So, with that, I think we'll move on. We do have a little special presentation, so if we can play that for her, please?
You're out, you're done. There we go. I just want to take the time to thank everybody here. This is like, this is very overwhelming, like, and I try, you know, I know if I started going down the list of thanking everybody here, especially our staff, I would miss some names and that gets you generally in some trouble. So, but, you know, it's the people to my right and my left that has made it where I can have such a successful year. No council member or mayor does it alone. We all use each other to bounce, whether it's venting, bouncing ideas off of each other, but the collaboration, we all have such different ideas, different backgrounds, you know, but we all come collaborate so lovely and our main goal is always, you know, the best for the city of Imperial. And when we come up with these ideas, though, sometimes I think they might be crazy ideas. We give the direction to our staff and they're generally amazing about doing it all. Also, my family for supporting me through all of this. It definitely takes a village and I know they know how appreciative of I am, but I definitely wouldn't be able to, you know, a single mom of two is tough on a good day and I'm also a working mom and a council member, so apparently I think there's more than 24 hours in one day. But mostly, you know, Parker and Colton, you guys are my motivation and my inspiration to set a good example for both of you. You know, Parker, we go to the park and you tell me that problems within our park that I need to give direction to Dennis to fix. And generally, they do get fixed, so, because, you know, but thank you guys and thank you everybody so much for all your support and I look forward to handing the gavel over to Mayor Amparano. And yeah, so thank you. And with that, I'll pass it off to my council.
With that, let's, council comments. We'll start with Ms. Mendoza.
I'll start over here. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a resident, I've known Katie for quite a long time, I've lived in Imperial quite some time. I first met Katie, I believe Tracy, if I'm not mistaken, it was her first birthday and I walked into her backyard and I immediately had to pick Katie up and take her inside because she was eating dirt. So, that's how far Katie has come since I've known her. That's what your mom was doing. So, like I said, I've known her, with the exception of one year, her entire life and it's been a privilege and an honor. I adore her, I adore her family. When she first joined council, knowing that I had been in city government, she used to call me occasionally, Stacy, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? Because she knew I knew interactions with city council. And so, for the very beginning of her term, that's the relationship, our relationship kind of evolved to that. And somehow or other, she convinced me to run her office. And at the point that I was fortunate to get on this council, a year ago, we were sworn in and on that night, the student became the teacher. I have learned so much from her. So, thank you.
I'm just glad I can return the favor because you, oh my gosh. I mean, you're who I went to advise for and I remember telling you, Stacy, you're who I turn to for advice, like, you don't need to be giving me advice, you need to be sitting up on the diet next to me.
Somehow or other, you convinced me to do it.
I don't know if that's a I'm sorry or you're welcome, but, so, thank you for an awesome year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Obeso Martinez?
So, like Ms. Mendoza mentioned, I am new to the council, so when you come in, you're like the new kid on the block, right? But I've been welcomed with open arms from the whole council and especially Ms. Katie. She's young, she's inspirational, she's very honest and I appreciate that and she's a bad, you know what? Like, I appreciate her honesty, her work ethic. She is very inspirational for a lot of people, right? She works hard, she's a go-getter and I can appreciate the working mom mentality, right? She does everything with 110% and I can call Katie when I need to ask her something as a soundboard and age doesn't matter, right? Wisdom matters and she is very knowledgeable in this position and I have learned a lot from her over this year. And I'm very appreciative of all the knowledge that she's passed on. As a new council member, sometimes you're worried about, oh, am I going to be able to talk to people? Am I going to be able not learn or have a relationship with your fellow council members, right? But I have been fortunate to learn so much from everybody, especially my ladies here at my little girl gang, I love that. But I look forward to always talking with Katie because she is, she knows everything. She really does. She knows everything. And not, and I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean, from...
Tell me that my whole life.
Something environmental, she'll know about it, right? If there's something going on from the county perspective, she's been there, she's worked there, right? And so, she does know a lot about a lot of different things. If I need to tell her something about health, she'd ask me, so it's a good reciprocal kind of relationship. And so, I appreciate our relationship and our friendship over this last year, so I'm very thankful for her. Thank you. And I will most definitely be taking you up on those healthcare advice as you all nominated me for the Ivy Health District Board. But one thing that it comes to mind with you, I remember you were being like, when you first got on the council, you were like, I'm just going to keep my mouth shut and learn. And I remember telling you like, no, you got elected to show your voice, show your voice and I think, obviously, I've been... Pretty sure and I'm so grateful you put that up the window very quickly. That's very true. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Congratulations, Catherine. Did a very great job. I've enjoyed watching you grow this year and bouncing a lot of stuff off you and we're trying to solve the world's problems together, but we'll keep trying, appreciate you all and congratulations.
James.
Tucker. But our city clerk is elected.
I'm going to say thank you for allowing me to bug you all hours when I need a signature and I enjoyed working with you as the mayor and thank you for helping me with everything that I needed when I would call you. Congrats, thanks.
It's time I'll open up to Mr. Marita and department heads.
Is Logan still here? I was gonna... Katie, the room speaks for itself as to who you are, how you're respected. You bring a unique skillset to the council, whether it's your engineering skills, scientific skills. I would say a good thing you're not a lawyer, so, it's all positive. With all of that, though, you paved new relationships with our federal and state partners, as well as obviously the local folks who have turned up to speak about you. So, I would just say that it's a good thing the city doesn't have to pay you minimum wage, you would break the bank. And it kind of feels like it's a goodbye, but it really isn't. You're here for a while longer and we look forward to that as well.
I just don't have to run the meetings anymore.
Thank you then, Mr. Marita. Mr. Martin?
Um, wait, sorry. Thank you for all the support. This year has been amazing, this fiscal year with the budget, you've given us all the tools that all of our staff needs and we really appreciate it for all your support and your leadership. Thank you.
Get to talk during the beginning of the meeting, not here. So, Katie, I'm just going to echo what everybody's saying, very driven, hardworking, something that all of our youth in the community can aspire to you, to look to your leadership, to look to your example. Very supportive in everything that we do over the last few years. You've been here for a while, we're still excited to work with you in the future. You guys have always been supportive, both our outgoing Katie and our incoming, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, it's been a pleasure and keep it short, thanks for the three million for straight improvements. Hopefully, that'll go to good use, thank you.
Well, Mayor, I was just going to say thank you, probably I did with those departments that doesn't have a lot of communication with council, but at the same time, the support through the budget, thank you very much.
Chief.
Hello, Katie. You were a snot-nosed little friend of my daughter's, staying over at the house and stuff and then I have been 100% impressed with you. The police department as a whole in any jurisdiction is kind of a unique department as it usually requires the budget and you gave very clear expectations and demands. I just recently had a meeting with our department and one thing that we did say with yourself and all the council is that all other jurisdictions should be jealous of the relationship that we have with our council and the support that we have from our council and our same manager. They don't all have that and we can really grow as a department and thus being successful as a city. And the art of knowing your job and staying in your lanes and it was very on display and it was very appreciative and I wish you all the best in the future. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, chief. Answer.
So, I came on in August and it sounds like I really missed out. So, I regret that, but, I don't know what's going on here. But congratulations and I look forward to building, strengthening the relationship that we have between our two government entities. I know there are some things that aren't going the way they should. So, and commit to the next mayor that we are working to resolve that and we are partners and we will get things to where they need to be. And if you find another three million dollars, I know where to go.
Thank you, chief. You, my next director, Victor Maricots, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all of you. Just started here on Monday.
So, while you're at it, why don't you tell us how it went for the last year with Katie?
It was awesome job, especially with budget, nice to hear that part, so hopefully we can keep that going, working with all you council members and congratulations.
You, congratulations. Welcome to the city.
Congratulations for joining us.
Thank you.
Katie, congratulations. I just want to echo what everybody else is saying as well. I appreciate your vision and that you tell us and you set those expectations, but then you trust us to do what we need to do to make sure that your vision comes to life. I really do appreciate that you guys do trust and support us in what we're doing and that really helps to make sure that we can have the tools to make your visions come to life. So, I appreciate everything that you've done this year. Some of the things that stick out to me is you ask us as a team, what do you need? And you make sure that we get what we need, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, actually, so, one of my goals when I got elected at council was, we didn't, we had one HR staff and myself and my fellow council members, we worked really hard to have an HR department. And so, I love watching the HR department grow just because that was one of my goals and seeing all the great things that you guys have done to be supportive for our staff, so.
I just started here also about three weeks ago, so, I did everything I did the whole past year, but as I can see, it was a lot, I hear a lot of good things, so I don't know working with you much in this capacity, but I look forward to it, but I do know you as a person and I've known you for a while and your intelligence, your drive, it's just, it's admirable and I will echo what people have said, just having the younger generation be able to see that, someone a little up to for that, that takes that initiative, it's nice to see. We need more of that in this council, you know, we're in good hands here, it was evident the city of Imperial was in good hands, so I just want to thank you and I'm sure the, you know, community thanks you, but you did a lot and we're very appreciative, so thank you. Thank you and I'm very glad to have you on staff, so. I'm going to have a hard time getting through this, but, working with you this year has been incredible. I've never been more proud to work for anyone in my entire life, so, I know, but, let me tell you, as a lawyer, I know, I've been crying all time, but, as a lawyer in this community, I've known Katie as the bad professional. So, everyone in this room knows her in a different capacity and I think it's incredible, she's running major projects, she is an absolute expert.
Um, so everyone in this room knows her in a different capacity and I think it's incredible. She's running major projects. She is an absolute expert. You fight her about salt and sea, anything. She's an absolute genius, but she also can hang out with you and have a beer, you know, and be. I've never met someone who cares more about people's mental health, about the morale of the city, about raises, about, you know, making sure everyone's happy. So absolute genius and such a pleasure to work with you. Oh, and by the way, every, all these new peo- new people, we had a line, you know, to come here because working for a, a group of people like this and Katie is a big honor.
I know, I'm gonna go cry if I say, if I say anything Turner, we're both gonna be crying. We'll just call it the Katie one two four.
And with that, I think I'll uh. So Katie, I know that uh the last year has been pretty fun for us. We got a lot of things accomplished and, you know, our many phone calls. Long phone calls, back and forth, you venting with me, me venting with you, helping each other. Um, I mean, things like that don't have to stop. As a council, I think that's where we, we have to lean on each other for these things, so um. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for always uh doing the best for our city.
Look forward to having over the gap. So with that, we're gonna move on to item A two. Or the, and I'm gonna pass it over to our city clerk.
Okay, I will um open nominations for mayor. At this time, I am now accepting nominations for mayor. I need a nomination in a second, please.
I'd like to nominate Robert Amparano for mayor.
Second.
Nominations are now closed. You may now vote. Motion carries five zero.
So. You wanna trade chairs?
Yeah, stay.
This is all yours now, buddy.
Look, you got a lot of stuff there.
I'm sorry.
So. With that, it says I gotta give some mayor remarks. So with that, Katie, I know you the uh, you left some big shoes to fill and I hope, hope, hope that I can do that. And uh move the city of Imperial in the way we're always moving. Make sure we move forward, don't look back. Make sure we stay the greatest city that we are in Imperial County. And this all starts with our residents, our uh families and all of our staff here. So thank you guys very much for the trust in me uh to lead the city in the way we should, so thank you guys very much.
Um, congratulations, Robert, and I know you will, cause you put a lot of energy into your, I'm gonna say job. Your volunteer work.
Congratulations, Mayor. You missed your first item on the agenda, which was item D, newly selected mayor assumes Karen opens nominee for mayor pro temp.
There's a purpose. So, yeah, there you go. So with that, uh, I will open up nominations for mayor pro temp.
I'd like to nominate uh James Tucker for mayor pro temp. I'll second that.
I got a motion in a second. Please vote. Mr. Tucker?
Motion carries four zero with one abstain.
Congratulations, Mr. Tucker. And you know, as a team, uh, I think we'll all do good. Council, everybody here will, will do fine.
Alright, thanks everybody for the support and I'll give it my best.
So with that, let's move to A three.
At this time, I am now accepting nominations for chairman. I need a nomination in a second, please.
Nominate Robert Amparano.
Second. Nominations are now closed. You may now vote.
I have a say so?
Motion carries five zero. At this time, I am now accepting nominations for chairman. I need a nomination in a second, please. Oh, vice chairman, I apologize.
I'd like to nominate James Tucker.
Nominations are now closed. May I get a vote, please? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to consent agenda. I said all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or any other person request that item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at time as determined by the mayor. Um, I'll entertain a motion if there is no changes.
B, um, B four and B five.
You wanna pull B four and B five?
Yeah.
You want for con?
Just uh, yeah, just discussion.
Okay, so we're gonna pour B four and B five, so there will be new items, uh, C two and C three.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna read the title in B three, just so that it's read out loud. Um, it's ordinance number eight two eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Imperial, adding restrictions to outdoor smoking in designated areas.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion with the uh withdrawing uh B four and B five.
Take a motion.
A second?
Got a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, with that, we'll move on to action items. C one, approval of governor's office of emergency services, Cal O E S form one thirty with the staff report. Mr. Marita?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thi- this is basically uh, uh designating city manager and finance manager as the uh authorized persons on behalf of the city of Imperial as the uh O E S finance matters.
Motion for approval of California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, Form one thirty.
I'll second that. Got a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to uh item C two, approval of purchase of one new T two, T two fifty, uh three fifty transit van for the community youth outreach cadet program. This'll be with chief.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, uh, as you're aware, we started our cadet program this year. Uh, we have already grown to, we have five that are in now, uh, we were three just not too long ago. They've already been uh active in some of our uh signature events that we've had. Uh, in fact, they had a meeting tonight. We anticipate that will continue to go as friends and, and families are coming forward. Uh, this program is slated for twenty to twenty-five positions, which I anticipate within the next twelve months we'll be at. As a part of that growth, uh, a transport van of uh fourteen seats or less will uh, would need to be so we can transport them to different events within the city as including some of the uh out of county competitions and uh events that they would uh respond to. Um, we are using or requesting the purchase. We've uh looked at a couple of different routes, but this is our, uh, we believe is our best uh avenue to, to acquire this uh van. And we will be using um special funding, uh, will not be coming from the general fund, uh, that's specific for community youth outreach programs. And I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Answered all my questions. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second?
Second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
With that, we'll move on to C three, approval of agreement with the Imperial Unified School District for a part-time school resource officer.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, at the beginning of this uh fiscal year, there was a uh, a genuine interest in a partnership with uh the school district to see if there was a second school resource officer um, that could be utilized and then so what would the, the, the need be? Um, one of the things after uh discussions was the potential part-time school resource officer. Uh, that's difficult. There's not a lot of those out there, so we uh, our, our team at the department uh looked at some of our needs because it would be a fifty fifty split with uh the school district. Um, and we were able to come up with a traffic officer slash school resource officer uh that would be able to be utilized by both entities and have direct impacts uh independent of each other and collectively uh when needed. Um, we did uh go over with our partners at the schools to find out the best times. At this case, uh, the general look with this would be it's a Tuesday through Friday, six in the morning till four in the afternoon. Basically from six to ten would be working traffic for our uh department. Uh, be able to transition, have their, their, their meal period and then be at whatever school to be assigned. And I would think primarily Frank Wright would be the school of choice on a majority. Um, I've been dealing with Brian Thomason from the school district, the superintendent. Um, they are running this with the board as well. Um, and it looks uh as it's gonna be accepted as well on that. Um, we do have some interest in the department to, for this position. Now, in regards to this position, it is limited funding position for the fact that as long as the school is wanting to participate, just like our regular school resource officer. Um, and at this case, where we'd be starting in February of this year and finish off eighty-five days and splitting a fifty fifty cost with the school, we had our finance department do the workup on that. And we uh, it's in your background here as far as the MOU. It, it mirrors a lot of the MOU language that is in our regular school resource officer, which also will be coming up in July um, with the school. But we believe this is a fair and equitable exchange and it would serve both entities very well and our community would be better for it. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, I appreciate that answer.
I, I do have one question. You talked about they'd be working a portion of their day on the, like on the streets on their, their standard. Are we incorporating traffic control at uh the opening of school and closing of school to be included in that?
Well, I, I bel- the, the direct answer is yes. Um, but I wanted to be clear that that is if we have other needs like traffic collisions that occur somewhere else other than the school or traffic uh enforcement efforts that need to be done in residential and stuff. Since this is a uh fifty fifty split, uh, we would want to have the autonomy to be able to uh assign them to those. And then if, you know, during those periods of time where we, we would put them near and around the schools, obviously for those uh traffic concerns that are always associated with the morning, lunch and afternoon time.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I got a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to uh item D, reports. We'll start with department reports. Any department reports?
Since our last meeting, we've had two new hires. Just wait for this slideshow. Um, so first we have Erica Lopez. She is an accounting assistant two with the uh finance department. Um, and then you've already met our second one, Victor Enriquez, administrative services director over the finance department. Uh, welcome to both of them.
Welcome. Any other department reports? Alright, city manager?
Nothing from you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, uh, start with our council, start to my right. Ms. Mendoza?
Uh, just the, I, I was able to attend the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce uh meeting as well as their um annual dinner. Thank you very much to them for the invitation. Um, and I, I don't wanna carry this on, but Merry Christmas to everyone. I hope you guys have a very wonderful, safe and happy times with your family and enjoy the, enjoy the time.
Thank you. Obeso Martinez?
I, uh, two, um, attended Imperial Valley Regional Chamber mixers and also their annual dinner, so thank you for that. It's always great to see the public and the community and all the businesses that are available and also Golden State Extracts we have. They had a chamber mixer as well, so that was amazing to see. Um, thank you to all the staff. You guys do an amazing job, the parade with the um Christmas in a small town back to back. Uh, you guys put in a lot of work. I mean, that's amazing. Just all the long hours that you guys do with the parks and the services and, and so I'm very appreciative of that. I'm sure the community is as well and the kids looked like they were enjoying all the snow and all the activities, so thank you again. The city really, really appreciates all your guys' hard work along with all the city staff. So I hope everybody has a good holiday season and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Um, no, just like to thank everybody for coming and congratulations to the former mayor.
Bernward?
I just wanna thank everybody for coming and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and hope we all have a safe holiday season.
Alright, thank you. And I'll keep it short and sweet, so thank you guys very much for the hard work. I know our events went off very nice. I had a lot of attendance, so thank you guys very much. Um, uh, if you guys like to stick around, there is some uh baked goods here that we, we have for after the meeting. Um, one of the things that we did ask, we did try to make this uh a little different, so, so the baked goods that we have are through our youth uh vendors. So youth vendors that uh have businesses and this is where this came from, so uh in theme with uh Mayor Bernward to keep up with our youth. This was a choice that we decided to do. So thank you very much for everything and with that, I'll adjourn this meeting to January third at seven P M.